Good evening. I call this meeting of the Carterville City Council to order. If you please stand for our invocation and pledge.
Let us pray. Our Father, which art in heaven, once again we thank you for your abundant mercy and your abundant grace. We thank you for this gathering tonight to do the business of the seat of Carterville. We ask you to come down and guide us and direct us and help us make the right choices. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Amen.
Please join me in the pledge.
Pledge to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please over the roll, please.
Here, Ross, Ward 1.
Here.
Jay Steph Ward 2.
Here.
Perry Ross, Ward 3.
Here.
Calvin Thule, Ward 4.
Here.
Eri Fox, Ward 5.
Taffren, Ward 6.
Here.
Thank you, Meredith. We have our council meeting minutes to approve this evening from February the 7th. Council, you've had these well in advance tonight and had an opportunity to look them over. Now would be the chance to make any corrections, and if there are none, a motion to approve would be in order.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Minutes are approved. We have an appointment to the land bank. Ms. Brock?
Yes, Mayor. Fritz Dent has agreed to fill the vacancy created when Greg Frisbee resigned on January 2019. Mr. Dent's term would expire June 30th of 2021, and your approval of Fritz Dent to the land bank is recommended.
Thank you. Questions, comments, or motions?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Mr. Lovell, next item, please.
Mayor, with respect to the Carterville building authority, Jack Clayton resigned last year, and the city is requesting that you place the city manager, Cameron Brock, to serve his unexpired term on that board, as the city has traditionally had the city manager on that board to monitor the interest of the city.
Okay. Thank you. Any discussion on that item, and if not, a motion's in order.
Make a motion to approve. Second.
All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Next item, Mr. Lovell.
Mayor, this is amendments to the animal control ordinance. As y'all recall, when these were done originally sent to MUNICODE, some dates were left out with respect to the original adoption, and these changes have been made in this particular amendment, and is recommended for your approval.
Okay. This, again, is the second reading. You've had this last meeting. Any discussion on the item? If there's no discussion, a motion is in order.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. We will not vote on the next item, but we've got a series of first reading of ordinances, and I believe, Mr. Lovell, you're going to handle those as well.
Yes, Mayor. I will make a general comment about all three ordinances. The city hosts or allows its property to be used for special events, festivals, or other types of organizations during the year, and we've had ordinances conflicting and people not knowing exactly who should be in charge of what. So what we've done is taken three of our ordinances and modified them, and we drafted them to sort of reflect what we do in practice, so everyone will have a uniform approach towards the use of city property. The first one of those is the Founder's Oak Parking Lot. This ordinance, basically, which is the parking lot right out the window there, which is basically used by the DDA for the farmer's market, car shows, and various other types of events they have that don't quite rise to the level of a festival. And this ordinance allows them to lease the founder's parking lot for those types of events only. The second ordinance deals with the special events, which is on any city property, anywhere in the city, whether it's a street, sidewalk, parking lot, building, or whatever. There's now going to be an ordinance which will have about an 18-step application that'll have to be filled in where the individuals will tell us whether they're having food, bathroom, security, their number of people, what provisions they're making for medical aid if that's needed, and all of that. And for the use of those properties and those applications will be reviewed by the city manager's office. City manager's office will approve or deny those applications and place conditions on them, perhaps. If the applicants do not like the denial or the proposed conditions, then they would have a right to appeal that to the mayor and council for y'all to review and make a decision with respect to them. The third one deals with our festival ordinance. Basically, when the city originally adopted the festival ordinance, it was sort of envisioned that every festival in the downtown area would come before the city council. Y'all would review it, review all the guidelines, everything they're going to do, the areas that they wanted to sell alcohol in, food vendors, music, and all of that. But as y'all know, it evolved differently than that in the real world. What actually had, the process that's really evolved to is that y'all now approve a series of dates during the year that you will allow festivals to occur within a certain area. Then the DDA will, sometimes on their own behalf and sometimes in conjunction with another entity, will make an application to Randy Menino's office stating the hours of the festival, the date, time, entertainment, public safety concerns, issues, security, and then Randy's office will review those, make sure they meet the guidelines, consult with the police and fire department and public works as may be necessary for individual applications, and then they will approve those applications internally, and that will be it. Unlike the old process where y'all were supposed to be reviewing and approving all that yourselves, and frankly, we weren't doing that. So all three are first readings. If you have any questions, let us know. We're happy to adjust or revise as y'all wish.
Okay. Any discussion or questions on any one of those three first readings? Okay. Thank you. We will plod on, and Mr. Menino, he'll get us started with SU 19-01.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. As you know, this is a special use request for Patricia Holt for property located at 4 South Tennessee Street. If you recall back, last year, in the middle of 2018, we amended the alcohol ordinance and the zoning ordinance to allow for microbreweries in certain zoning districts and locations. We did that with the special use criteria being added to it, where they would be required to come back before you individually, but we do now allow them in those zoning districts that are reflected in the ordinance. With that, we've got our first application for a microbrewery. We reviewed it based on the standards, the special use standards that were adopted. It went before Planning Commission last week, and with that, the Planning Commission did recommend approval of this application.
Mayor, I would like to add, it's not just a microbrewery. It also will have a tap room associated with it where the public will be allowed to come in and drink what products they, I guess, brew there.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Menino at this point? Thank you, Randy.
Sure there's a pass for you.
I will open up a public hearing for SU 19-01, and anybody wishing to step forward to speak for or against may do so at this time. And when you do step forward, if you would please, for our clerk, if you will state your name and your address, please.
Hey, everybody. I'm Dean Kimberley. I'm one of the owners of Drown Valley Brewing Company.
I'm a part of the DUs here as well.
I just want to tell you what we will and won't be as a microbrewery in Carterville. So what we will be is community-focused, family, competitive, friendly. What we won't be is another bar. So community focus is actually in our mission statement. Our mission statement is striving to grow our community by building relationships through our passion for locally handcrafted beer. What we want to be is a place for people to come, whether it's with your friends, your family, your pets, or alone, and enjoy a nice handcrafted beer in the city of Carterville. What we don't want to be, what we won't be, is a establishment for you to come, get rowdy, get out of control, whatever. There's other places you can get. Here we won't serve liquor. We're only going to brew handcrafted beers at our location. One of the biggest focuses for us, our passion, as it tends to this, is the community. Carterville is a very passionate city, and one of the things that we would like to do is help to grow that community by sending people to local restaurants, local establishments, local shops, as well as starting river cleanups, hiking, mountain cleanups, and other local-focused events. So charities are big to us as well. Good Day and Pikes for a Purpose would be one of our flagships in the brewery where we will donate on certain nights, certain proceeds to charities as well. Again, dog, kid-friendly, we have a kids' corner, an outdoor patio, people can bring their dogs and enjoy a nice afternoon, especially in this crazy winter weather where it can be 70 degrees on some days, 40 degrees on others, come out and go to the patio, bring your pets. And then also a place to learn about craft beer. Carterville's kind of an oasis right now with no locally handcrafted beer, but everybody else is enjoying the fruits of that labor of Rome. And I think even Calhoun's grabbing a local microbrewery. Dalton has two now. So why not Carterville? And we definitely want to be a place where people can come enjoy a good time and do it responsibly.
Okay. Thank you, Dean. Questions?
Thank you.
Again, we'll continue with the public hearing for SU 19-01. And again, anybody wishing to step forward to speak for or against may do so at this time. And seeing none, I'll close the public hearing, and we will take this up for final consideration at our next meeting. The next item, Mr. Menino, is Z 18-04.
Thank you again, Mayor and Council. This first went before the Planning Commission back in July, and based on some issues with the driveway and so forth, they actually tabled it, and it just came back up this month. With that, the property has been properly posted and advertised, and we did review it based on the standards for exercise of zoning powers. The request is to rezone approximately 1.3 acres that's currently zoned, R7 Single Family Residential, and they're looking to rezone it to MU Multiple Use to develop an eight-unit apartment complex. With that, access to the property is from 25 Baker Street. Since the first time we saw it in July, the site plan came back. They're looking to put in a 25-foot buffer adjacent, surrounding the property. And with that, we did hear from some neighbors during the original meeting in July that had concerns that dealt with the neighborhood and so forth. And after that, Planning Commission did review the information that was provided to them and did recommend this for approval. Now, there was a 2-2 vote, and the chairman had to split that and did recommend it for approval.
Okay. Thank you. Questions for Mr. Menino on this item at this time?
Can we go back to that other photo, please? The aerial? Randy, where are they talking about the entrance going? Just out of curiosity.
Right there on Baker Street. That's the only road front that property has. Come through the Housing Authority property there, and the road turns 90 degrees there. That is the proposed access for it. The Planning Commission recommendation was approval with a maximum of eight units on the property. I don't know if I said that the first time.
Any other questions at this time? Connor, is there a slide that just kind of shows that? I know in our packet, there was a slide that kind of showed that parcel in a different color. It wasn't like a satellite view, it was more of a...
Zoning map with the surrounding R7 zoning?
Yeah. That's what I was... Yeah, okay.
Yeah, the pink is the MU.
That might be helpful to some that haven't seen that before. That's the piece of property. Okay. Any other?
The pink is the MU zoning. The paler yellow is the R7, and I believe it's R15 further to the left on the map.
R20.
R20.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions for Randy at this time?
Mayor, since this is the first reading, I'll wait for mine until the 21st, next meeting.
Okay. Thank you. If there's another questions for Randy, I'll open up a public hearing for Z 18-04. And again, anybody wishing to step forward and speak for or against may do so at this time. And once again, if you kindly state your name and your address for our clerk, please.
Sure. So my name is Steve Ragus. I'm the owner of the lot. I'm also a contractor that's going to be building it. My wife and I have a small rental property business here in Carterville, and so we're going to be managing the property once it's all built. You know, there were some comments about how it's taken us a while to get here, and one thing that I just want to tell everybody is that we've made pains or efforts to make sure that it fits with the community and that the scale and the size of it is appropriate for the density of the neighborhood. So we were very sensitive. We had some conversations, excuse me, with some people with the neighborhood, and really, I think this is a result of many months of development and conversations with everyone in the community to try and make it fit and blend with what's in the area. So I hope you guys can approve it. Thank you.
Thank you. Continue the public hearing for Z 18-04. If anybody wishes to step forward, speak for or against, now's the time. And seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. And again, council, we'll take this up for final consideration at our meeting on March the 7th. And we'll move on to Z 18-05. Mr. Menino, once again.
Thank you again, Mayor and Council. This is actually proposed rezoning. It's essentially two zonings. The property's all under one ownership. It's currently zoned MU with conditions and R15. The applicant is looking to rezone the back portion that's currently zoned R15 to RSL Residential Senior Living for approximately 33 senior living individual home sites. The front half is currently zoned MU, as I mentioned, with a condition on it for a maximum of six units per acre if it was chosen to be developed as multifamily residential. And the additional 2.5 acres between the portion on Tennessee Street and the residential senior living is currently zoned R15, and they're looking to add that to the MU zoning to increase the size of the MU property that they have. Again, this is essentially two different zonings on one parcel. We're looking to do two different products. The back half, again, senior development. Front half, multiple use, which could end up being one of several enumerated uses that are listed in the zoning ordinance. Again, they did request to originally remove the condition of a maximum of six units per acre on the multiple-use portion. With that, the property was properly posted and advertised. Appears to be no conflicts of interest, and we did review it based on the standards for exercise of zoning powers. During the public hearing, there was concerns from neighbors in the area, the primary one being traffic concerns, trying to get out on both ends on Tennessee Street, trying to turn left or up on 41, trying to turn out of there. We did have a concern from the school superintendent who was concerned about the number of units that could actually be built if the MU portion was developed as multifamily. And with that, the Planning Commission did recommend approval of the application with no conditions on the RSL portion, and on the MU portion, they recommended a maximum of eight units per acre.
Okay. Any questions for Randy at this point?
Mayor, one other point. During the presentation by a lot of the people who were talking about traffic, what they basically stated is they thought as bad as the traffic was in that area that they needed a traffic light, and they felt the best solution to that would be if there was some sort of access to Gentilly from their neighborhood or anything. And I just make y'all aware of that, that that was discussed during the meeting. I have no idea how you'd actually physically would do that, but that's what they mentioned during the meeting.
Yeah, Gentilly runs parallel to Mimosa there, and Gentilly actually has a traffic signal at its intersection with 41 there at Target.
I think they were talking about right up there where they are almost touching, that maybe at one time behind where the Nelson's Building used to be, one time maybe there was some sort of cut through there or something they used to use. I don't know, but...
Yeah, there was.
Yeah, they mentioned something along those lines.
That building has been fenced off. The building he's pointing to has been fenced off since then, but they used to be able to cut through.
That driveway right there.
Okay.
And it'd be pretty easy to cut an access right through there. That's long time ago, please. Thank you.
To wrap it up, again, the Planning Commission did recommend approval of both the RSL and the MU, and the MU conditioned to a maximum of eight units per acre.
Thank you. I will, if I'll open up or continue a public hearing for Z 18-05. Thank you, Randy. Anybody wishing to step forward, speak for or against, may do so at this time.
Mayor, Council?
Good evening.
My name's Gene Bunch. I've lived in that area for about 45 years or a little more, and it continues to get squeezed pretty bad. We've had two wrecks this week. One right there, Mimosa, where it comes out in 41. The other one right there, Hickory Lane, where it comes out into 41. And we continue to have accidents there. The state says they're going to do something about the exit into, across the street from Hickory Lane that runs up to Church Department. I don't know what they plan to do, but we have a real problem there. I used to fish a little bit before I got so old I can't hardly handle it anymore, but when I came down 41 and turned there, I had to stay out in 41, and people would blow their horn at me because you couldn't make the turn. You could not turn in that area. So I stopped doing that. I started going a different route, but still, it is a real problem. But I just wanted to bring to your attention that there's been a real problem since the Deveraux built the building up there on Hickory Lane. I think now it's called Sting, maybe called Stingray, I'm not sure. But there's usually about 50 cars in there, six days a week, in that little parking lot. And it's very difficult for them to get out of there on Hickory Lane and not get hit because I've almost hit them a couple of times myself. It's a real problem. And everything I'm speaking of is mainly to do with traffic. I don't have any problem with rezoning. This is the first time I've heard all those houses originally. What I heard was they were going to build, they're off Mimosa, was going to build a couple of buildings for seniors, and that's all I've heard about. But the main thing I have is, right at the present time, there's 65 houses in that little area. There's, say, 50 cars in that one little business there. There's no exit where you can get to a red light. Most of the time, if you're going north, you have to drive over to Tennessee Street and turn north, drive up, find a red light, and go back south. Same way if you want to go north. Well, you can't go north. When you come out into 41, you have to go south, but you can hit a turn lane fairly quick and get back north. But the traffic there sometimes is so bad, you just can't get out in the street. I've almost got hit there myself a couple of times. If you get down to Mimosa Lane, the shrubbery is so bad there next to the street, you have to pull out and violate that access lane to the Home Depot and I can't think of the name of the little, I'll think of it in a minute maybe, but anyway, the little...
What about the Dunkin' Donuts?
Dunkin' Donuts, yeah. And you violate that lane if you pull out far enough to see the traffic coming south at you. And once you get out there, they pull over all the way up, and it's illegal for them to do that, I'm sure, but they'll pull over up on Hickory Lane, they'll pull into that access lane, and we're coming down through there 40, 50 mile an hour, and you can't get out of their way.
I understand. Mr. Bunch, I'm going to, I think you've done a good job of painting the picture of the transportation issues in that area. And so, in regards to that, if we can pull this back to where the proposed rezoning is... Are you speaking for it or against it? Or are you just trying to make us aware of items to consider as we consider what we're going to do?
Well, I think a little bit of both. I think if you approve it, then the way streets and everything stand now, you're going to have a lot of seniors that get killed up there. Because it's just, and I may be one of them, but it is a real problem. So we're really against the ordinance, the way it's presented, without some relief from traffic.
Okay.
So that's basically what I wanted to say.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
For much of your time. We'll continue the public hearing. Once again, anybody wishing to step forward, may do so at this time.
Ron Gollis, 120 West Cherokee Avenue. I represent the Thornbrows and ECLP, which is owners of this property. To give you a little background real quick, the intent of this is, a lot of that property will be sold at some point in the near future. Ted and Janet's goal with this back was to try to find a very conservative, yet functionally, you know, a feasible use for that property. Talking with Planning's owner department, I think this proposed zoning is a very conservative, you know, if you read through that, it requires an HOA, a lot of different things. So that was the desire for the back of the property, is to create something that would protect those properties around there, including the Thornbrows properties to the north, all the residential properties to the front. The Thornbrows, and of course, her father, Ernest Cochrane, have had property there, lived there probably, I don't know, 50, 60 years themselves. They share probably the same belief that Mr. Bunch did. There's probably improvements that could be done on Tennessee Street and Joe Frank Harris. So regardless of the zoning, whether the property stayed the same or not, I think that issue is a separate issue that probably needs to be addressed. The front half of the property, Mr. Cochrane did a self-imposed condition on this front two acres in 2002 when he rezoned at MU, which put the restriction to, I think, six multifamily units an acre. They want to attach this back 2.5 acres to the MU because if you look at it geographically and topographically, everything lines up. That's sort of a crest of the hill. Everything to this side would be commercial, similar use. Everything to the back would become that senior living use. We, the owners, I think the school board, Planning Commission, the department, I think everybody agrees that putting a limitation on the multifamily component of it is wise. I think the recommendation is an eight-unit-per-acre limitation. I don't really foresee this being a multifamily-type development, but anyway, that condition would be on there, and I think that would sort of better serve everybody's interest by having that. Other than that, if there's any questions that I can answer, I'd gladly do so.
Oh, I'll ask a question relative to traffic. You said, you know, I mean, obviously, the family's familiar with that area, having lived there for an extended period of time. And again, with the knowledge of that and putting that development there, what kind of road improvements do you see the developer?
And keep in mind, there's not a development happening. This is sort of a, unlike a lot of the rezoning requests where you have somebody bringing your project, laying it before you, this is one where they're doing it in an effort to sort of protect the situation. They also own the triangle where the, I believe it's Cobb Chiropractics is.
The In...
They own this. In the department meetings, there's been a lot of conversation of, well, what might be the best way to address that? I think departments, and I don't want to speak for them, but I think they have various opinions about whether to do away with some of the, you know, with the Mimosa where it pills up, making enhancements down here. The owners are very flexible. They're willing to work with the city however they, you know, however it needs to be. Not having a set-in-stone development, it's a little hard to predict, but I think you'll see, there is a consistency. And I don't have my notes in front of me, but I think it's 704 feet is what the county's property is, the old Forestry Bureau or Forestry Agency. I think there's about 704 feet along that property line, and that's sort of consistent up and down Tennessee Street. So when you look at it just geographically and, like I said, topographically, it makes sense to be consistent with that zoning, but to put the condition on it, on the multifamily. But again, if something was to come up, I think they're very flexible with their desire to work with the city on what's in the best interest. That is an area, I mean, I'm 51 years old, riding the school bus as a kid. I hit that route. It has not changed in my five decades. So, you know, it's probably time for some improvements, as well as a lot of Tennessee streets, so.
Thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
And we'll continue the public hearing for Z 18-05. And again, anybody wishing to step forward? And again, anybody wishing to step forward and make a comment may do so at this time. And seeing none, I'll close that public hearing. And again, council will take this up for final consideration in our meeting on March 7th. Mr. Jones, you have the next item, please.
Sir, good evening, everyone. We are finally bringing the stabilization of our high service pump building number two to a close. We have before you a final adjustment change order tonight and that amount is a reduction of $25,874 to the contract as amended. You've got the details of this in your package. We did have to do two change orders that increased the price. The project was originally bid at $1,193,475. We are bringing it to a close at $1,306,725, 26 and 25 cents. So about a nine and a half percent increase over what was originally awarded. Keep in mind that we wound up installing over 3,500 linear feet of six inch micro piles under this building. This thing is sitting on stilts now. That was quite a bit more than originally we had planned on. Would like to take just a minute of your time and give a little bit of credit to our design engineer, Wheatiman and Singleton. They worked very hard with us on the fly in this project as we saw the additional micro piles coming in. They amended their design, they tweaked a few things and were able to generate, you know, about a $50,000 savings just in that and they didn't charge us for the additional engineering. So I think that's worthy of giving them a tip of the hat. But would recommend this for your approval and we will put this project to bed.
Thank you. And then we've had enough rain this week that the hill that's sitting on is probably all washed away. We've got to do it again, is that...
I, I think that if the water plant slides off and goes to Cobb County, this building's going to be standing there like a pier. Yeah.
Very good. All right. Any questions for Bob on this item? If there's none, chair will entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
All in favor of the cap saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bob. Chief Carter, next item, please, sir.
Thanks, sir. Good evening, mayor and council. During regular session in January 17th, y'all voted to accept a grant of equipment, donation of equipment from Firehouse Subs Foundation. This is for Swiftwater Rescue. We were notified by the foundation that instead of them procuring the equipment and delivering that to us, they have asked that they would rather be able to provide us a check than us order the equipment. No change in the amounts, it's $15,232.72, no additional expense to the city. We're just simply asking for a revision to accept this process. We already have accounting codes in place within our budget for the last firehouse grant that we had. We've met with the finance, there'll be no issues with this. It'll be a cash in, cash out.
Okay. Thank you. Questions for chief on this? If not, motion's in order.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor of the cap saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, chief. Mr. Hill, you've got the next two.
Evening, mayor, members of the council. Our first one here was for the odorizer, odorant, excuse me. This is our stinky stuff that we put in our natural gas so that everybody recognizes it. It's Merketan. We're asking to buy some 500 gallons of this stuff. It's $24.50 a gallon. It comes to about $12,250. It could take a couple of months for us to get this. They have to put us in a cube where they do deliveries. They don't just do this every day. So we, everybody that uses this stuff is waiting for some.
You mentioned in the work session, the price might vary a little. Do we need to do a little bit above that, do it like an amount not to exceed? So if it's $3 more, you don't have to come to us or...
You know, that may not be a bad idea if we just made it like 13 grand.
Okay.
That'd be $750.
What would you think would be the high end of how much that would swing?
Hmm.
I mean, not to exceed, give me a number.
I'm just going to say 13 grand.
Everybody...
That'd be $750 more.
Okay. All right. So if there's, if there's any questions, other questions for Michael on this? If not, if a motion would contain that if council is so inclined?
Make a motion to increase to not to exceed 13,000.
Okay.
Second.
All in favor of the cap saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Next item, please.
Okay. We are asking for approval to buy an instrument to do locates with. This is our utility locates. Since the gas system does all the locates on Monday through Friday, day shift for the whole city. This is a high-tech piece of equipment. We expect it to help us along here. We actually budgeted, I think, for two of these. We're buying one now. We'll see how it works for us and we think, we're expecting it to be well. Everybody uses it in the area like these contract locators and we just want to use them. Try it, see how it does.
Very good. Questions, comments or motions?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor of the cap saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Michael, Mr. McGill.
Thank you, mayor and council. The athletic bid was sent out and the Parks and Rec Department received three bids for the purchase of various sports equipment as noted in the attached quotes for softball, baseball and tennis. We are recommending a low bid of $9,787.54 from BSN Sports for your approval. This is a budgeted purchase.
Any questions for Brett on this? If not, a motion's in order.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor of the cap saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Ms. Summers, you have the next item.
Solid Waste Division is requesting to enter into a lease or finance contract, for a commercial front loader for the amount of $6,192.40 per month. The city garage has deemed one of our main frontline trucks as to be unsafe. That truck is responsible for a third to a half of our daily route. We'd like to enter into this type of arrangement for 13 months to see if that will help mitigate our downtime and our maintenance costs.
Okay. Questions for Crystal on this? If there are none, a motion is in order.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor of the cap saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you. And Mr. Porter.
Yes, mayor and council. One of your goals is to AMI system for our utilities. We have met with a company called Utility Measuring Solutions and we'd like to enter into a consulting agreement with them. They will meet with all the utilities as well as our finance department to make sure it's going to work, be compatible with our utility billing software. Cost is not to exceed $151,970 and is recommended for your approval.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions for Dan on this?
Where's that coming from budget wise?
Electric, gas and water of each budget $50,000 this year. The initial amount is $134,435. There's a contingency of over $17,000 puts us at the 151. So Derek said he'll pay up the difference if he has to pay up there.
That not to exceed amount, we approve.
Mayor, make sure that's in the...
Coming from a legislature.
Any other questions? If not, a motion's in order.
I make a motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor of the cap saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Mr. Reinhardt, you've got the finance report.
Honorable mayor and council, we will be looking at the December 2018 financial report and comparing to December 2017. The general fund revenues increased over last December by 1.4 million. Expenses decreased by about $490,000. Two areas of revenue that I look at on a monthly basis is local office and sales tax have increased over about $219,000 and building permits and inspection fees increased over about $95,000. The Warren and Sugar Fund revenues increased over last December by $1.7 million. Expenses increased by $1.1 million. This is due to increased personnel expenses, increased operating expenses, decreased debt service expense and increased capital expenses. In the gas fund, revenues increased over last December by $1.7 million. Expenses increased by $4.2 million. This is due to increased personnel expenses, decreased operating expenses, increased cost of purchase gas, increased debt service and increased capital expenses. In the electric fund, revenues increased over last year by $1.2 million. Expenses increased by $290,000. This is due to decreased personnel costs, decreased operating expenses, increased cost of electricity and increased capital expenses. In the Stormwater Fund, revenues decreased by about $2,000. Expenses increased by $317,000. This is due to decreased personnel expenses, increased operating expenses, increased capital expenses. If you remember, we've got a vehicle that we purchased back last year. We're expecting to be reimbursed for it through the GMA lease. In Solid Waste Fund, revenues increased over last year by, I'm sorry, $28,000. Expenses decreased by $166,000. This is due to increased personnel expenses, decreased operating expenses, decreased capital expenses and, oh, again, we've, we've also, we've also got a piece of equipment in here where we are expecting the GMA lease pool reimbursed on that also. In the Fiber Products Fund, revenues increased over last December by $20,000. Expenses increased by $110,000. This is due to increased personnel expenses, decreased operating expenses and increased capital expenses.
Thank you. Any questions for Tom on the finance report? Any comments?
Yes, just a note in the additional information Thompson out that unrestricted cash went up for the month and restricted cash went down.
Thank you. Any other questions or discussion?
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any other business that needs to come before council tonight? Come on, Armon. Again, name and address for our clerk, please, sir.
My name is Armon Knowles, 134 Mercer Lane, Cartersville, Georgia. So mine's just basically on the parks and recreation. I have lived in Cartersville 39 years. Came through the rec department. Coach Cooley's coached me before. I don't know if that was a good thing or a bad thing. I've had both of my parents retired from City Hall. They worked on the first floor. And I understand that there's going to be a hire and that's fine and I'm hearing it's an outside person. How I feel about that is that if you're telling me this outside person is going to bring a great change, something innovative, something different to the parks and recreation, I'm for it. But I also believe that we have capable candidates right now that can bring change innovation and what we need to help continue to grow with Cartersville's parks and recreation. So I mean, I don't know if it's a moot point at this point, but I just felt from the last meeting to this one, I needed to speak my piece and say that we, we have people that are Cartersville born, Cartersville bred, that can continue to help grow our parks and recreation. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Erin Jones, 90 West Side Chase, Southwest, Cartersville, Georgia. I live actually in the county, but I am first want to address my classmate, Jay Stepp, and congratulate him on his appointment to the chair of the Chamber of Commerce. Congrats. And also just speaking to what Armon said, I think the gentleman who was talking about the craft, the micro brewery, said something that really spoke to me, that Cartersville is a passionate community, passionate about the people here, passionate about the business by Barto, you know, keeping things, you know, in-house, so to speak. And just to kind of echo the sentiment of what Armon said, definitely open to the fact to if, you know, a candidate that's coming in is going to be able to bring, you know, change, he's going to be able to break, be able to be progressive and forward thinking enough to be able to look at other departments of recreation departments, you know, surrounding us and saying, hey, maybe we can do this better, maybe we can grow this, you know, or whatever the case. I'm a product of Cartersville, Georgia. My daughter, though we lived in the county, she matriculated through city parks and recs, went on to play, you know, for the school system at Cartersville and now she is a sophomore in college at Hampton University, majoring in kinesiology to be an athletic trainer, a physical therapist. So not only the implications of who you have in positions like in the rec department, rec coaches like Coach Cooley and so on and so forth, it has further implications than just these are kids, you know, playing ball. Like I've served this community for 15 years in the capacity of a clinical social worker as a juvenile probation officer. And I can give you all of the details. I can tell you about Howard Gardner and multiple intelligences and how the kinesthetic intelligence and all of those kinds of thing and how we can help people that are at risk and so on and so forth. But moreover, if we're going to educate people in this community, if we're going to, you know, foster growth in them, we don't want all of them, like they're, like a lot of times a lot of professionals with college degrees, they fall into two categories. They either never want to come back or they want to come back and give back to the community. And we want, in order for us to advance as, as a city and as a county, we definitely want to keep some of our talent, you know, here. Talent that has the wisdom to know what to do, that knows about relationships, that has outside, you know, relationships, to be able to pull those resources in. So I just wanted to kind of speak as a person who doesn't live in the city, but has definitely benefited from having a functioning, you know, we don't want, you know, even though I live in the county, I am a Purple Hurricane and I, you know, I don't want everything going to the county, you know, for, for, for rec ball, you know. I don't want to see, you know, people having to go to Acworth to have their children play in a competitive league or whatever the case. I love this city. I'm born and raised, never left, have, have opportunities, could steal. But just utilizing what we have here is hugely important and it makes us a viable city for a city who like, quite frankly, we don't have a lot for kids to do, teenagers to do, you know, things like that. If you want to have like a little bit of fun or do something a little bit more recreational, we have to get on 75. And so, you know, that's just my thoughts, just as far as we can still have that, that hometown feel, but we can still be progressive as well. And I think, you know, that we definitely have those persons, you know, here in our community. So thanks for your time.
Thank you, Erin. Any other business to come before council this evening? Calvin, I kind of watched your assessment of Armon's game. If you care to make that public clear or should we talk about that afterwards?
I don't say that he was great.
I wasn't asking if he was great, I already knew that. I was...
No, he's...
Oh, I got you. Any other business that needs to come before council tonight? If there's none, those folks that want to try to catch the last portion of the Cartersville basketball game, hopefully they're up by a bunch already, but chair will entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'm adjourned.
There you go.
Are you serious?[1780.33]